All right, you are live on YouTube.
Okay, so we just adjourned from executive session. We are back into open session. At 5 o'clock, we have a public hearing continued from our last Monday, November 30th, 2020 meeting in conjunction with the Board of Assessors relative to the residential factor to determine the percentage of the tax burden. So right now, being that it's not close to 5 yet, we're going to go jump right down to ambulance abatements, write offs for the months of October and November. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance abatements for October in the amount of $50,261.83 for contractual, write offs $116,301.82 for a total of $166,563.65. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the November ambulance abatements contractual for $56,351.89 and write off for $19,239.55 for a total amount of $75,591.44. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the police station change orders, number 58, number 65, number 64. Do you want to know what they are as I go through them? I can tell you.
Yeah, I mean on the...
I read them, but yeah.
Well, I didn't see them, but the orders are 21 through 23, I thought. That's what we have on the agenda. What numbers are you talking?
But those are, yeah, those are the change order. I'm going according to the line items. So they are change orders, number 23 to 23, but they include these line items within them. So I can give you those and it's the same amount. The first change order is in the amount of $4,364.68. It includes two ballots for the car charging station and two extra days when they were digging for the cell tower.
Okay, what's the total amount, Lisa? I don't need to get all the...
Okay, the total amount is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, $19,678.77.
Total them up.
I didn't total them up, so let me just do that real quick.
Around $30,000, I told you this for some reason.
Oh, yeah, plus the $10,000, yes.
The total of all three...
So the amounts are...
Twenty-nine, $29,707.
So the amounts are $4,364.68 for change order 21. The amount of change order number two is $15,314. Change order number 22 is in the amount of $10,029.11 and change order number 23 is $15,314.09. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco? All right.
Do we want to wait for Jackie for the county ballot and the annual town election?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold on that. And David, you want to hold on the Comcast licensing agreement? Do you have people coming in or no?
Yeah, we have actually the cable advisory and council are going to come in.
Okay, then I will go right to it. I'll entertain a motion for the renewals of annual licenses issued by the Board of Selectmen. The list is at the end of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve all of the attached license renewals for Class 2 motor vehicle dealers license, Class 3 motor vehicle dealers license holders, motor vehicle graveyard license holders, annual auctioneer license holders, all alcoholic package store license holders, wine and malt beverage package store license holders, all alcoholic common vicular license holders, all alcoholic club license holders, entertainment seven day annual license holders, jukebox license holders. I'll entertain a motion to approve all but copart from 170 South Main Street with all restrictions that are existing upon these said licenses.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Did you guys want to do a motion to waive the reading of those, or do you want to read each one, everyone?
I can read them if you want, or we can, I can entertain a motion to waive the reading and...
I think you're probably best off just to read them real quick.
Okay, I will. Class 2 motor vehicle deal license holders, Basic Equipment Incorporated, Basic Used Trucks and Equipment, 39 Middle Borough Road, Beach Bluff Auto Sales, 25 Beach Bluff Road, Bob's Motor Works, 58 Locust Street, 68 Locust Street, Bowler's Garage, 94 Middle Borough Road, CJ Autos Tires, 33 Narrows Road, Chop Ahead Custom Cycles, 13 County Road, Claremont Auto Sales, 36 Middle Borough Road, DPF Enterprises, 5 Janice Marie Way, Evolution Auto Sales, 86 South Main Street, JM Auto Sales, 65 Chase Road, Unit 2, Miller's Auto Sales, 115 Chase Road, PJ's Tires Incorporated, 65 North Main Street, Sandman Auto Sales, 13 Ridge Hill Road, Ray's Garage, 65 North Main Street, Class 3 Motor Vehicle License Dealers License Holders, Big Wheels Truck Sales, 42 Quantum Pog, Bug Stevens, Freetown Auto, 190 Slab Ridge, CSA Auto Parts, 33 Howland, DM Auto Enterprises, 98 Brayley, East Freetown Auto Salvage, 97 Brayley, Hometown Automotive, 45 County, J&amp;T Auto Salvage, 35 Howland, Pick and Pull, 65 Chase, Westgate Auto, 101 Brayley, Motor Vehicle Graveyard License Holders, Pick and Pull, 65 Chase Road, Annual Auctioneer License Holders, J&amp;T Auto Salvage, 35 Howland Road, All Alcoholic Package Store License Holders, Juniors Convenience Store, 58 South Main Street, Circle K, 4 Chase Road, Crossword Liquors, 1 Chase Road, Wine and Malt Beverage Package Store License Holders, Grandpa's Place Incorporated, 9 South Main Street, Prime Express, 1 Mason Road, All Alcoholic Common Vicular, I can't say that word for some reason, License Holders, Independence Harbor, 10 Narrows Road, The Nephew's Italian American Kitchen, 2 Crossroads Drive, All Alcoholic Club License Holders, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, 664389 Middle Borough Road, Entertainment Seven Day Annual License Holders, Independence Harbor, 10 Narrows Road, Nephew's Italian Kitchen, 2 Crossroads Drive, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, 664389 Middle Borough Road, Jukebox License Holders, Veterans of Foreign War Post, 664389 Middle Borough Road. Thank you. Still got 10 minutes?
Do you want me to jump ahead and take care of, or I want to get out of order here, but I can do the different appointments that we need to do?
Sure.
So I will issue a motion, well, I will issue a motion to set the pay rate for the seasonal plow operators at $21 an hour. This was the recommendation that we got.
I'll make a motion to approve according to the recommendation from the highway surveyor.
Do I have a second?
Second, but I have a question. Is that rate of pay for the driver, or does that include the equipment?
That's to the driver, my understanding.
Yeah, so this will be for the next agenda item. We're going to reaffirm a vote that we took our last meeting to appoint Edward Walsh and Mark Audette. This would be their pay rate for when they are plowing for the, for the...
Okay, okay, all right, that makes more sense.
And can you also include in your, in your motion to sign the change of status form as well?
Yes, I'll amend that motion to include, to sign the change of status as well.
All in favor?
George, George in second.
Sorry, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so next, I will issue a motion to appoint Edward Walsh and Mark Audette as seasonal plow operators effective November 30th, 2020 and expiring April 30th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm Ed Walsh and Mark Audette, as explained.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right.
Trevor, there's more information coming on number 27.
Yes, I figured I'd skip that, go to 28 for now. I have some things I want to talk about in that later on, so should I jump to 28 now? Does that work?
Yep.
So I'll issue a motion to appoint Paul G. Sadik as Constable Criminal Process effective December 7th, 2020 and expiring June 30th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, next, I will issue a motion to appoint Madison Ashley, Logan A. St. Louis, and Nicole Rodriguez Rios as part-time signal operators trainees effective November 23rd, 2020 and expiring June 30th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
So now we have the appointments that were, you know, Jackie's appointments that we're going to give, should I do those as well right now?
If you actually want to hold off on that, Jackie and Cheryl should be joining us shortly after 5 o'clock.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, we have what, five more minutes, four more minutes?
You can go back up to number 11 if you'd like.
Okay, everybody saw that there's no change in the seasonal population form for the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, so with no change, I'll entertain a motion to vote and approve, vote to approve and sign.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
All right.
Three minutes.
Yep.
All right, we'll go down to Patriot Half Triathlon Event, June 19th, 2021. Everybody has seen that, but I'll entertain a motion, vote to approve contingent on the state guidance at the time.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald, sorry. Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And it's actually, I'm sorry, Lisa, it's just been brought to my attention that the appointments that we made earlier, Trevor, you actually misspoke.
I said 2020, instead of 2021.
Yes.
All right, I wrote in my notes, I wrote 2020. I just realized that afterwards. That's my bad. I apologize. Should I?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reaffirm the vote with the proper date of 2021.
Do you have a second, George?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, number 16, we'll hold on because we have two other people joining us. Number 17 is not necessary. I'll jump to number 18. I'll entertain a motion to enter into tax title auction for two of the properties, 14 East Howland Road and 106 North Main Street.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second?
I'm just wondering if we might not be better off waiting until all this COVID is over before we have these auctions. Might do better. There's no real rush.
David, did, when we did the one over there, was there a problem with getting people to go? How is it? Oh, I can't hear him.
Yeah, David, microphone.
It was working, it was just very soft, David.
Hello?
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, loud and clear.
All right, at the auction for the Freetown group, we did have a good turnout, so I don't really think it's a COVID issue so much. People are going to, you know, look at the properties, do their due diligence in terms of researching, you know, the tax title property and determining whether it's a billable lot, that kind of thing, and they're going to bid based upon the information that they have. So if there's an interest, they will do it. And we're talking, we're not talking about the Middle Borough Road property, correct?
Excluding that.
All right, I'd say just move forward, but if George has an objection?
No, not at all.
That's a board decision, you know?
Yeah, I did have one concern, so to speak, is putting a minimum bid on here. Now, I've heard a couple of reasons why not to do it. Mostly...
On the Freetown group, there was a specific reason, but, right. But it seems to me that we don't want to give this away, and we should have some number in mind, but if not, it's okay too. Generally, there are two ways you can do an auction. One is you can have what is called an absolute auction, which means there's no minimum bid. And then a second way that the auctioneer can present it as having a reserve, which is the minimum amount of money that he will accept for the property. And once again, that's a board decision. We did it on Freetown group because we didn't really think there was going to be a lot of interest, which proved to be incorrect, and the property sold basically for market value. So, you know, in that case, it worked out despite the fact we didn't have a reserve. But if the board wants to have a reserve for the properties, those two properties, you know, we just need the assessors to say, you know, essentially what the value of the property is based upon the land assessment or indoor building assessment. That would be our reserve, I would think.
For the two properties, the Howland Road and North Main Street, if we could have a number there as a reserve, like you said, I'd be in favor of that.
It would be, well, there's two ways you can get that reserve number. One, you can have an appraisal done, which I don't think you want to do, because you're going to be spending money to, you know, to sell the property. The second would be just to establish whatever the baseline for the taxes is using the building and/or land assessment.
Well, I mean, it shouldn't be too difficult to get an estimate.
Once again, it's a board decision. Do you want me to use the, you know, the values that have been established by the assessors? That will be the reserve.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
At least we'll have a minimum. We'll be getting at least what we're paying, what we're asking whoever to purchase the property is going to pay in taxes. Would that be correct,
Mike, bought it? Yes, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Would that be appropriate in terms of, we have two properties that are in tax title. We're looking to, I know the tax, the assessment values are generally less than fair market value, but we need to establish, we'd like to establish a reserve for each of those two properties that we're going to sell. And if that's the case, then we should establish the reserve based upon what the assessment values are, based upon what the assessors have been assessing both for land and for the building. I know one has a building on it, the other doesn't.
The only issue with that is that the assessment value is based on prior year sales, so we would be looking at, well, the assessment, the assessment's always at least two years.
Yeah, it's a lower number. It's not, it's not, it's not a, what would be determined a market value.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a market opinion. It's a sales opinion based on prior years. I mean, it gives you something. It's obviously going to be close. I'd be happy with that.
We could do, we could do the assessment plus 10%, something like that, assuming that there was an increase in value of 5% over the last two years.
Either way, would be fine with me.
Okay, so I'll with, well, nobody made the motion, so I'll entertain a motion to go forward with tax title auction for 14 East Howland Road and 106 North Main Street with, to be auctioned at no less than the assessed value.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's...
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes. Okay, let's jump right into, back to our 5 o'clock public hearing. It's continued from Monday, November 30th, 2020 in conjunction with the Board of Assessors relative to the selection of the residential factor to determine the percentage of the tax burden to be borne by each class property. With that being said, we have Michael Motta, Jeff Field, and is that it? Assessors Office, who's here?
That would be Mike in the office.
Okay, and Mike Motta. All right, Michael, Mike McQ. Mike Motta, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lisa. The first thing we should do is, we're having our own assessors meeting in effect simultaneously, so we need to call our meeting to order, and Mike McQ will do the honors of reading the technical information. Anything, Mr. McQ?
I am. I had to unmute myself, and now I've got to find that blessed lengthy thing. Yes. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Assessors will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Freetown website, FreetownMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID listed, calling the number listed and entering the meeting ID, or by going to https://us02web.zoom.us/join and entering the meeting ID listed. No in-person attendance of meeting members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website or YouTube channel an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And this meeting was posted with the notation that the assessors would be the guests of the selectmen and to refer to the selectmen's meeting notice for the Zoom access information. And with that, I believe, assessors, you only have two members out of three. You have Mike Motta and Jeff Field, and Sue Parker is absent. And with that, away you go.
Okay, thank you for all the formalities. So, selectmen, we have provided you with a document that lists the past 10 years of shift for residential and commercial, what the current shift is, and what some numbers are for your consideration today. And I do have some other information. If you're, if you're interested, if you, if you're concerned about individual shifts and what the effect would be for the average single family or average commercial, I have some of that information as well, but I'll leave it to you. If you have any questions about these, then we'll go from there.
Lisa, I think you're muted.
Well, while she does that, I can say that for any members of the public that are, want to, you know, make any sorts of comments, if you could use the raise hand feature, or if you called in, which I think we just have Mr. Field calling in, it's star nine on your phone, and we'll be able to unmute you.
I was trying to be like proactive and drown out the background noise over here by muting myself and then got all discombobulated. I apologize. Trevor or George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the impact will be on your average, you know, households.
Okay, so I've done some, I've done some calculations on average single family for this year and last year. So the average single family value last year was $349,477, and this year is $363,533. Based on that and the number of parcels, last year's single family average bill, based on that average value, was $4,550.19. So this year, if, for instance, you stayed with a 1.43 shift, then the average single family bill would increase by $66.68 for the year.
All right.
As the shift increases to 1.44 or 1.45, those numbers would decrease.
Obviously, yep, all right.
George?
Now...
Thanks, Trevor. George?
How long has this particular shift been in place? The 1.43 has been in place since 2014. Fiscal year 2014 was the first year. It had been 1.45 for 2010 through 2013. So it went to 1.43 in 2014, and it's been the same every year since. What is the rationale for changing the shift now, if there is one? The purpose of the shift is to, and we use the word shift, to shift the burden between residential and commercial industrial personal property. So it's, it's not a financial decision, because no matter what you pick, the same amount of money will be collected in taxes, the same total will be collected. The difference really is in which of those classes will be increasing or how much they would increase. Yeah. Well, my question really is, why would we want to change the shift now? Is there a benefit? I mean, there's obviously a benefit to one side or the other, but if we leave it at the status quo, is there a reason not to do that? It's more a policy issue than a financial one, although it's financial for the people paying the bills, so that's, that's kind of silly. But it's, it's, it's really just a policy issue. So as an example, at 1.43, the average single family value, I'm sorry, the average single family tax bill would increase by $66.68. The average commercial would be $99.14. So if you are inclined to favor the single family residents, which, by the way, single family residents are over 75% of our, the number of taxpayers. If you wanted to favor that, then if you increase that shift, then you would be lowering the amount of difference. So for instance, if you went to 1.45, then the average bill would increase by $37.60 instead of $66.60. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I would be in favor of leaving the shift as is. Is there a reason, besides the obvious of what would happen, but is there a reason to make a change to the shift at this time?
There, it's really walking a fine, it's walking a tightrope, right? It's like, what's feasible for both residential and shifting the burden to commercial, which is really, you know, it's like walking that fine line of what's feasible for both sides. So...
But what I'm saying, Lisa, is it is what it is, and people are accustomed to the status quo, let's call it. What would be the rationale now to...
What would be the rationale now to change it? Do we want to give businesses a break? Or do we want to increase the taxes on business? Or, you know, I, I just would like to know why we would want to make a change now, besides, like I said, the obvious. One, one side or another is going to benefit. But if we leave it alone, it is what it is, and end of the story.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with where it is. So I would, I would entertain a motion to keep the shift at 1.43 for residential at 1302 and commercial industrial personal property at 2103.
Lisa, do you want to open it up to more public comment?
Yeah, once we get the motion in a second, then we can, I'll open it up.
I'll, I'll grab that motion.
Do you have a second? All right. Now we'll open it up to anybody that has any questions.
It looks like Mike McQ is raising his hand.
I just want to clarify, selectmen, you're voting only on the shift. You're not voting on the tax rate. The tax rate exactly will be set after the shift is set.
Thank you.
With the shift at 1.43.
All right, and just in case anyone joined with, after I gave my little spiel, if you use the raise hand function, we'll be able to unmute whoever needs to make any comment. For anyone that happened to call in, if it's star nine on your, on your touchstone phone, it sounds like I'm 80s game show. And that, that'll show the raise, raise hand fa, feature.
Anybody have anything? Okay, with that being said, we have a motion and a second. There is no further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Do you guys want to go into talking about the next two things, farm, animal excise, and tax deferral and exemption programs?
I think you have to.
I'm sorry, just real quick, we're going to need signatures on this decision, so we'll, I guess, arrange through your office to get those done.
All right.
Okay, so, so yeah, we can go ahead and talk about, about the exemptions first, if we could.
Mike, before you jump into that, I think Tim was trying to signal that they need to vote to close the hearing portion.
That's correct.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing about the Board of Assessors relative to selection of residential factor to determine tax burden.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco.
Yes.
All right.
All right, Michael and Jeff.
Okay, so we had sent you the Board of a, a letter regarding exemption and whether or not it'd be amenable to making changes. We're, as far as I know, the, the procedure would be that we would have to submit a, submit to the town meeting to get them changed, but we just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page as far as the desire to go ahead and do that. And the issue is that there are a number of exemptions available to folks, and those exemptions, the 41(c), for instance, is for elderly, so those exemptions are, have to be applied for, and they, and they're governed by state law as far as what the criteria is, but the state does allow the individual cities and towns to, to change the income limit and the interest rate that's charged on one of the exemptions. And we haven't changed it in a while. The, the asset limit, for instance, for 41(c) is currently 28,000 for a single and 30,000 for married. And that, a, as an example, that asset would be any savings, checking accounts, 401ks, annuities, other vehicles. You're allowed one vehicle, it's exempt, but a second home and so forth. So that 28 or $30,000 is not a real big number, which means that most people that would apply would not be eligible, eligible just because of that asset limit. So we have the ability to increase it. We, as the Board of Assessors was considering it, but as I said, we were just curious to know what your thoughts were on, on that.
That decision's way too big for me.
Well, the only thing I would have to say is, income of 28,000 for a couple, this is, that is very, very low. I think I.
I think it was assets.
Yeah, the 28,000 is actually an asset limit for, of the 41(c) for the elderly exemption.
Bank investments, things like that.
Yeah.
But what about income?
There's an income, the other, the other question we had was about deferrals. So there's two different, two different ones we were considering. The exemption, which, which if somebody qualifies, would get them typically, it's $500 exemption, meaning a $500 deducted off their property tax. The other choice is called a deferral, which is typically done when somebody's having financial hardship, and it is not a discount, it just puts off the collection of that tax until some future date, and it does put a lien on the property, so we are assured of collecting it. And it also incurs an interest rate, which, again, we have the ability to change. So, for instance, right now, on the deferral, the, the income lo, limit would be $20,000, and we would charge 8% interest on that tax that wasn't paid until it was paid. Other towns in the area are as high as 51,000 for an income limit and 4%, for the, the rate, the interest rate, so.
You know, could I suggest that we table that for now and get all the information together for the board to review and then discuss this at a future meeting?
I, well, again, the reason why we were coming to you was not necessarily for your decision so much as just sort of an opinion as to, I mean, it's our opinion that, that these numbers allow, they haven't been adjusted in a long time, and that we should increase them. And what we didn't want to do was go through all that trouble and, you know, do that work, and then go to, to present it to the town meeting and have, and find out at that point that the selectmen were not inclined to go along with it. So we just, I guess we're just really looking right now for sort of a philosophical question more than a specific.
Well, what you just said is, I would absolutely agree with you. If you're going to look at that to increase those numbers, I think that is the right thing to do for a number of reasons. You know, one reason would be to keep seniors in their home for as long as they can. And if people worry about the tax revenue, I would submit that if a senior can't afford their real estate tax, and it causes them to sell their home, the chances are a young couple with two kids will buy the home. And then our expense goes up a lot more than to revenue. You know, just based on the cost of schools per student.
So, Michael, you would probably present this as a warrant article anyway, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I think that you should personally, again, work on the warrant article, and then, because it's hard to, philosophically, yes, it needs to be done, but I don't know what those numbers are, and from, and it's hard to decipher what those numbers you know, are going to be. So philosophically, yes, I think that that's the right way to go, to bring it to town meeting floor as a warrant article.
I, I have a quick question. So like, when we're talking about the asset limit, do, do you know if other towns like tie, tie that to some type of public data, nationally public data, or maybe the increase is tied to like a CPI or potentially like, at least the rate of inflation? Is there anything like that, that other towns do, so it's something that kind of naturally will grow or, or move with the overall kind of savings that the average person might have?
Yeah, actually, part of the statute is to increase it with the cost of living and the state issues a percentage every year that, that we use.
Okay.
In, in our case, in Freetown's case, we haven't done that. So, you know, part of the thing would be, what, what we would propose was, would be that we would increase that asset limit to a certain amount. We'd also likely propose that we observe the state's increase every year, so that we don't have to come back
Yeah.
to town meeting to increase it again.
That's what makes the most sense to me. I like that.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement on that. Number two is, you wanted to talk about putting the farm, animal excise tax on the ballot. I think we talked about that before, but we never formally voted on that. But you can just go over that quickly, because we have a long agenda in front of us, unfortunately.
Yeah, and actually, I, I'd like to come back to you with that. That one, I would like to prepare some, you know, some specifics about it, but the short story is that there's a farm animal tax that goes by the state. The state actually has a schedule, and it's, it's literally a list that says ducks are worth this value, and chickens are worth this value, and so forth. So that's one way to assess that tax. The other way is that we can assess it as personal property, and we can at that point use a a value that we assign to it, that, you know, the value of, of these particular animals is X dollars per animal and so forth. So I'm not really prepared to go through all the details, and you haven't got the time tonight anyway, but what we'd like to do is set up a time in the close future where we can give you the specifics of those numbers and, and, you know, just come up with, with an answer for that.
That sounds perfect to me. All right. Thank you so much. Jeff, nice seeing you.
Okay. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike McQ.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, Mike, you need to adjourn. You guys need to vote to adjourn.
Yeah, just procedurally, if we can have a motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. I would second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
And Mike?
Yes.
And Sue is absent, and you guys are adjourned.
So we are officially out of here. Thank you. Thank you all aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night.
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 All right, Tim, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Can't hear you, Tim.
Can't hear you, Tim.
Sorry. Jackie, are you on the line? I see her. Sorry, she's muted. Stars, oh, there we go. So we actually have a little bit of false pretense here. We, we have you on, we have you on for a couple of different things, but we actually have a little bit of a surprise here for you before we get into it. We actually, on the line, we have Representative Fiola and Representative Schmidt here. They wanted to say a few words about, you know, your impending retirement.
Okay.
Well, I'll start by saying first, thank you very much to the board for allowing us an opportunity to be part of the celebration of Jackie's years of service to this town of Freetown. And it's been such an honor for us to serve alongside Jackie for these years. And I, I just want to point out that this past year has certainly been like nothing that Jackie ever contemplated as she considered perhaps retiring. And we should just point out that you've been able to guide Freetown through the triple, the trifecta of voting by mail, early voting, and traditional voting. And you were able to do it safely, securely, and always with a smile on your face. And for that, we will be forever indebted to you. Thank you so much, Jackie, and I'd like to yield to my colleague, Representative Fiola.
Thank you, Schmidt, and to the select board. Thank you for having us, and to David, and I see Cheryl on here, Jackie's colleague, and to all of you, I see Gene and others, but we felt it was in our hearts to come in and join you tonight, because Jackie has, again, as elected officials, you know, she's the front door for us when we bring our papers and, and, and have questions. And so we have so enjoyed, I know for, for Paul, it's been a little bit longer, but for the last seven years to work with Jackie, and as Paul shouted out, the year has been quite trying for everyone. And so Jackie, we can't do this in person, but I would like to present to you the official citation that we can present as state representatives of the town of Freetown. And to you tonight, and I promise you will get this in your hands, Jackie, we will ensure that before you retire. But it is from the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Official citation, I won't read every single word, but it offers its sincerest congratulations to Jacqueline Brown, in recognition of your retirement as Freetown Town Clerk after nearly 25 years of dedicated service. A grateful community and Commonwealth thanks you. We wish you great health, great fort, good fortune ahead in every endeavor. On this seventh day of December, 2020, before the select board, signed by our Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo, and myself and Representative Schmidt as the House Members of the House of Representatives. So Jackie, thank you.
Well, thank you both. Thank you both. It's been a pleasure working and, and an honor working with both of you. Even when we've needed to discuss things about elections and everything, for you to, I've contacted you, the lobby for me, and you both have been there and everything. So thank you so much. And I had to chuckle that Representative Schmidt did say that this year has been a year, and I'm going out with a bang, definitely. So thank you both very much for, for this year and, and the years that I've worked with you. Like I said, it's been a pleasure and an honor. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and thank you, Jackie, and to the wonderful board, select board here in Freetown. I'm gonna take a picture of our citation, Jackie. Too bad you're not on the Zoom, but thank you all, and I'm sure we'll be speaking or hopefully seeing one another soon. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Carol and Paul. We really appreciate it, and we, we all like working with you both, so thank you so, so much.
Thank you. You know, we're here, so, and we made it through the budget. It wasn't on the agenda tonight, but I think we fared pretty well in the long run, and so we're, we're very proud of that, and.
fingers crossed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, there's a lot more ahead, so you better buckle up. Because you never know what's going to happen next. Okay.
I only have a couple of weeks, so hopefully not too much.
Oh, anyway, but you're not off the hook yet, because there's still some stuff for you, for you to do. So right now, it's the county ballot certification, so I will entertain a motion to, it's really informational only, correct, Jackie?
Yeah, it's reporting that we have to do with the Commissioner's Office and the, the, the state as far as the figures and everything. The wording in it is kind of antique. It says that you've looked at the ballots and everything, which they never change the wording. It's just you signing off and me confirming the votes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to sign off on the county ballot certification as presented by Jackie Brown.
A motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco.
Yes.
Jackie, is that something the board needs to actually sign themselves, or can I sign on their behalf?
I, I think you can sign on their behalf. I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, perfect.
All right, next, call for the 2021 Annual Town Election to be held on April 5, 2021. I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so the last thing is number 27. Trevor?
Yes. So we will now be appointing, replacing all Jackie's appointments to Cheryl. So I will introduce a motion for the appointments of burial agent, census liaison, local emergency planning committee, and master public records assessor officer to Cheryl Estrada, Estralla, sorry, effective December 24, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Cheryl, did I butcher your last name there?
You're muted, Cheryl.
All right, Jackie and Cheryl, there's still some hiccups on number 27. Just we want clarification about carryover for vacation time, sick time, and all your union stuff. So there's still some some things that we need to work out. But that will all be ironed out within the next couple of days. Okay? All right.
Do we want to call a special town, a special town meeting, a special selectmen's meeting to handle all that or do?
No, we're definitely going to call a special meeting to handle all that because we'll probably have to do the town administrator's contract at the same time. So we'll just do those two personnel issues if the board's okay with that.
Yeah, I know. I just know that there, like, we have some deadlines of filing, getting these things certified by the state as soon as possible. So the earlier the better. I met with Cheryl earlier today and we kind of talked through some stuff. And so, yeah, I think just as soon as possible, so we can get going on this. And I have some ideas that we'll have to kind of work out.
And that needs to, all right, then we do need to set that up and we'll have to set up an executive session because it's going to be with non-union personnel and it's 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 really convoluted and dicey. And Joe Fier is looking at it, is going to make some recommendations to us as well.
I I was just trying to even for me to take my notes to untangle the whole thing. It's definitely a lot going on. So I, but I think I have a pretty good understanding on where we stand now and some options going forward. So.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah, just so you know, we do have those deadlines, like he was saying, just to give you an idea, Cheryl's got to be able to sign off on all vital records and everything effective January 1. So I got to get her a signature on file with Vital Records. I got to get her a signature on on file with the state for election purposes and all, with the AG's office, with the Registry of Deeds, for all the stuff we've got to sign off on zoning and and planning boards. So there's a lot of different offices and the only way we can get everything on file with them is to show a an appointment slip from the Board of Selectmen stating that effective January 1, she'll have that capacity. So it is important as soon as possible. And in addition, we've got to order her some stamps and stuff like that. So with the holidays coming up and everything, I know there isn't much time. So if you could schedule some meeting, you know, sooner than later, that would be great.
Absolutely. You have my word.
Yep, I'm ready. I mean, whenever we can do it, my, I will move my schedule, whatever I have to do to get that meeting to happen. So I want to get this all settled. I think everyone will sleep better once we have this settled.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Jean, Jackie. Sorry, Jean.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, we're going to go really quickly to to the vocational technical school recommendation for the Free Town Vocational Education. Subcommittee has a recommendation to the board. Our guests are Gene Fox and Will Sinkowitz. So I'll turn it over to both of them.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm actually going to let Will speak to this because he's been kind of spearheading it and he went to the last meeting. We were all at the Old Colony meeting, but Will attended the most recent, which is kind of how we've arrived at our decision.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jean. Thank you. So I attended the, so a little bit of context, and I'm not sure, Lisa, how far back you you want me to go, but I think the board is pretty well aware that the class of 2024, a Free Town student looking for a vocational option kind of was left out in the cold, so to speak, with Old Colony not being able to fill any seats for them. So I give Lisa a ton of credit and kind of the regional school district and committee a lot of credit for for kind of going to the drawing board and seeing what else was out there in order to provide that opportunity for for our eighth grade students this year. We didn't want another year to pass without them not having a vocational option. So we reached out to several vocational schools, Bristol Plymouth being one of them, and we're able to set up a meeting. We toured the the facility this summer. Really, really impressive. And at the last Bristol Plymouth School Committee meeting, they voted, and I'm pretty, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure it was a unanimous vote, to allow up to 15 spots next year for our eighth grade students. So in the short term, we have we've kind of shored up some seats for for our incoming freshmen next year to to attend BP. But we also had the option of continuing to try to work towards a long-term entry into the Old Colony District as well. So that was a lot of the work that the regional subcommittee was was kind of tasked with as far as what was the better option and best educational model for for our students. And I think I have some kind of comparisons here just outlining the two. And Lisa, I'm sure you can speak on some of this a little bit more as well, but Bristol Plymouth offers 19 shops for our students compared to Old Colony offering 13 shops. The per pupil expenditure, so the cost that it would cost us to send students to Bristol Plymouth is $13,974, opposed to $17,965 to send our students to Old Colony. If we were to join the Old Colony District, there is a buy-in associated with that, and I think it's roughly around $650,000 because there is some debt that Old Colony has as in their possession. So we would we would take ownership of some of that. There is no buy-in for the Bristol Plymouth Regional District, so so that's another plus. Regardless of whether we sent our kids to Bristol Plymouth or Old Colony, the town is still on the hook for transportation. Not much changes there. And the board, or the subcommittee, rather, it was, after looking at the comparisons, looking at the product that Bristol Plymouth has to offer to our our Free Town students, it was a tough decision because we have a longstanding history with Old Colony, but it was kind of a no-brainer for us. And I guess I can pass the 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 mic to either Gene or Lisa to to fill in some of the holes that I'm sure that I missed. But I am excited about this potential option for our students, not just in the short term, but in the long term of joining the district, meaning Bristol Plymouth. I think it was something that they were receptive to. All the conversations with the superintendent seemed relatively promising at this point. So it does look like there is a long-term partnership there in the works. So.
I totally agree, Will. You you did nail it. You've got 19 shops as opposed to 13. You have a robust sports program, which is very important to a lot of our children. The non-resident tuition, which is what we pay whether we go to Old Colony or BP, is substantially lower at Bristol Plymouth and is actually projected for next fiscal year to be even less. I don't know why.
That's weird.
It is weird, but it actually went down from 13,794 to 13,729. So we also like the fact that the communities that are a part of this region, this regional school district are are different and but they were still our neighbors. So they include Rainham, Bridgewater, Taunton, I can't remember them all, but they're all they're all really great communities. And it's a hop, skip, and a jump off Route 24. Saying, so I don't think the transportation bill is going to shoot this out of the park. We we did feel and we did tour. The tour was very informative, very impressed with the leadership there and their willingness to make it an attractive environment and to educate people about what their programming offers, which is really quite unique. Very impressive.
Great. Jean, a quick question. So I think, or Will, you might be able to mention, answer this as well. So there's 15 students for next year? Is that what I heard?
15 is what the allocation would be, up to 15.
Up to 15. And so compared to like what our average number per grades is at, or sorry, one question, is that per grade? So that would just be for that class?
Just that class coming in. And that's on the low end, Trevor. That's definitely on the low end. But it's it's a it's a foray into a future of great potential versus what we had this year. Yeah.
Okay, I see that. And then, yeah, so like Old Colony, do you know how many students we would usually have there?
Well, right now, I think we, they said we had 24 applications.
Yeah.
And that's unusual.
Okay, so it's we're in ballpark area though, right?
Oh, yeah, totally. Well, actually, we're thrilled.
Yeah. All right, great. Thank you.
Actually, I have a quick question before we move on. Do we know if there's anything in place for the last year's students that might have gotten shut out? Like, does BP have any sort of like night programs or anything along those lines?
They do, but we haven't gone down that road. I can tell you, they do have evening programs.
Right. Okay.
So I'll just say a couple of things. It wasn't an easy decision in in one sense because of the relationship, but what our students in eighth grade are going to get so beneficial. I mean, there are extra shops and programs, biotech, collision, dental, design and visual arts, early education, heating and ventilation and plumbing. And those are some of the programs that Old Colony wants to have at some point, but these these programs are available for our students now. So and some of the communities are Berkeley, Bridgewater, Dayton, Middleborough, Rainham, Rehoboth, and Taunton. Some of the area communities are just like us. And when we do comparisons, when we're looking at, you know, impacts across the board, whether it be salaries or whatever, those are the communities that we compare ourselves to all the time. So they're not different from us. They're exactly like us. So anyway, I will entertain a motion to move forward with our eighth grade students and our vocational education towards the direction of Bristol Plymouth with a recommendation from the Subcommittee.
A motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Great. On behalf of the Subcommittee, thank you.
Thank you for joining.
Have a good night, guys. Thanks, Will. Thanks, Jean.
Yeah.
All right, David, I'll turn it over to you for the for your presentation for Cable Committee.
Okay, I do have Bill here, Yui. He assisted us in the process of putting together the negotiations and preparing the bargaining points that we had originally discussed with the board. The bottom line is that we were able to increase the contribution from 1% to 3%. We were able to successfully negotiate getting $100,000 over 10 years, which is a 10-year contract. The net of that will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000. We were able to get a high-def channel, although that high-def channel won't be immediate. It's going to take some time to do that because they are getting that request in a number of communities and they're still trying to make sure that they can do it in an orderly fashion. And we're going to have to basically get in the queue for that. We're going to have a side letter, which will give a small discount to senior citizens. That could not be included under FCC regulations as part of the contract itself, but they have done a side letter in the past and they're willing to do that. As I said earlier, the contract is for 10 years. I think that we met pretty much all of the points that we had gone into with Comcast. And and I think overall, it's been a successful negotiation. I want to thank Bill and and the members of the committee in in getting us to this point and it's our recommendation that the board endorsed the contract. Bill, did Comcast already sign off? You're on mute.
No, they haven't signed yet, David.
Okay.
I hit all the points, right?
You did.
Anything you want to add?
Let me just check the list. Effective date, November 1, so it's slightly retroactive. 3%, $100,000, 2 SD channels, 1 HD channel, and the senior discount. I think you got them all, David.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the cable contract.
A motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. And and might I just say that it's typical to have three original copies signed by the board? All three get sent to Comcast. They sign three. They keep one, send one original back to us, and they send one to the state. So if you wouldn't mind signing three originals and sending them to Mike Gallo, that that would be appreciated. That's the process.
All right, I'll make sure that's done once we get those copies.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Members of the board.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome.
David, you too. I know this was a long, 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 long process. All right, we'll go right to the Council on Aging Renovation Project.
Okay, I guess where where are we at this point? I did, as I did email the board members regarding a discussion that I had with Town Council Mark Rich that we had discussed the possibility of reissuing it as an RFQ, given the potential for it being considered a quote-unquote "design service." And as a result of that, I did put together an RFQ that can be used by the boards should it decide at this point to to go forward with that process. However, the bids that were submitted as part of just the regular 30B procurement process, and we discussed how this had happened in another community that although it is a building project, let's say, the the point of the the RFP was to look at the options in terms of programmatic space that's going to be required. And based upon that, race, how much additional space will be required? And then looking at the three different options in terms of pros and cons of each, coming up with a ballpark, not any kind of a final price nor a final design. So at a minimum, we're going to get the bids in on Friday. We'll take a look at them. We'll decide at that point whether we're going to continue on that road. There is a potential that we may get a protest based upon somebody saying that it should have been a designed service. However, you know, the board at that point can make that decision as to whether it is. But I think the bottom line is at least we'll get a handle on how much the study portion of the project will be.
Okay. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did get an opinion from Mark also about the property itself and the way the article was worded, that it was contemplated that that project was specified as being on that location and if we'd wanted to do something else. And there was also a question about whether there was a borrowing involved. However, we did take the money out of capital stabilization, so there was no borrowing. So that's a non-impact item.
All right, well, I look forward to Friday and see what that what that's going to be like.
Yep.
What happens Friday?
Friday?
Yeah, what is, what happens Friday?
We're going to get the quotes in based upon the 30B procurement for the three options.
What three, David?
The three options are to renovate the existing structure, to build a new The three options are to renovate the existing structure, to build a new senior center, or to build a combined senior center in, with another municipal department such as a library. And what we're going to do is we're going to have the, the Council on Aging meet with the design engineer or designer and go through the process of what they're currently using the space for at the present time, what anticipated future services they'd like to provide, but they don't have space for, as well as other unmet needs that they may see incorporated into either a renovation, a new construction, or multi-purpose building, including elevators, including, you know, kitchen facilities, including, you know, different things along those lines. And as a result of that, we'll have some ideas on the pros and cons of each of those approaches. And we'll be, the, the board will be able to make a decision whether to move forward, knowing that, you know, that you know, one way or the other, in terms of doing the renovation, in terms of saying, all right, we're going to do a new senior center, but this is when we're going to do it and involve some planning. Or, I know what you're going to say, George, they, you know, they did get the money and, and, you know, that is, I guess the other thing it's hopefully going to tell us is whether that amount of money is enough to do what is being proposed.
But the legal opinion took off the table, a multi-purpose building. Isn't that correct, David?
I, I didn't, I, I don't have the legal opinion in front of me, but I don't believe that that is the case. The only thing it said was that the $550,000 would have to be spent on pro, on that property.
Could we have, could we have Tim read the letter?
All right, it is in the packet. It doesn't necessarily say we can't build a library, but it just kind of says we can't build it with that funding.
Oh, all right. I didn't know that's what you were referencing.
Right, so, I mean,
I'm sorry.
We're not making any decisions here. We're waiting until the bids come in on Friday. We'll, we'll wait to see what they say and what they do. And regardless, I believe that $550 is not going to be enough money anyway. So we're going to have to go back to town meeting for additional funding, no matter what we do. But I think that instead of like rehashing this over and over again, we wait till Friday to see what the bids come back in, and if we can rehash it on another meeting like Monday.
I think if you find out that the bids come in and they're $45,000, $50,000, and just for the, the study itself, you got to rethink that because you don't have $40,000 or $50,000 to do that study. If it comes in at 15, you do have money from the town administrator's engineering and design account to, to, to take out and do that. The other question is whether or not that 550 contemplates the use of those funds to do the study and, you know, and who controls the money? So.
All right. We'll wait until Friday then. Thank you, David. Town building closure in event of an emergency. So.
Lisa, do we actually want to jump to the library, sorry, to the library, to the roofing project? Jeff is on the line.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Hi, Jeffrey, sorry.
Jeff, it's star six to unmute yourself.
How you doing, Lisa?
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see your bright shining face at the bottom.
I, I have it just on my phone.
Okay. Do you want to, you and David or whomever want to bring us up to date with the roofing project, please?
I can do that. They did meet on-site, Andy, George and Jeff. There was a discussion between the, the parties about the, the scope of the work that was going to be done on-site and whether or not that area was heated and whether we needed insulation. It was agreed, from my understanding, that they were going to include the insulation, which is a five-inch insulation, that it was going to be a rolled membrane roof, and that it was going to be bid out in, in two, not in two phases, because I don't want to say it in two phases, but bid out with alternates. So if the money is not adequate, then we can go back and, and at least do the part of the roof right now that is a problem. If we have enough money to do the whole roof, then that's even better. We'll have an alternate that will state that. And from there, the goal is to have Andy put together the specification for, for, to bid the project out as well as construction oversight. And they're going to do that in January. The hope is to have the contractor and the contracts and sign by mid-February with a start date in March. Because once the weather starts getting warm, there's going to be a lot of competition for contractors to actually do the work. So if I'm not correct about that, George or Jeff, you want to jump in, that's fine.
Well, Jeff had proposed an alternate solution because the building does have multiple issues that may need to be addressed. But I'd just like to turn this over to Jeff. And Jeff, can you go over basically the conversation you and I had after the review of the building and what you felt was maybe the better use of funds?
Well, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
After that meet and I kind of assessed the, the building a little more with, with blocks, actually just disintegrating on, on the side for the walls. There's a lot of work to be done to fix that. It, it kind of popped in my mind, it's like, are we trying to design a whole new thing to bring it up to the roof? Or are we trying to just stop the leak at this point? It, it's, either, either, either way, I'm okay with it. I'm not opposed of doing the insulation. But one thing I probably bring up would be the shape of the building itself. It, it's kind of tossed me back and forth. This whole thing started because there was a leak on one side. Do we just fix that or do we look for future and keep putting money into, into that whole project? Again, this would be the board's decision. I pretty much have said that. It, again, it's up to the board.
The, the whole issue about the blocks wasn't contemplated.
Either way, you know, it, it, I, I'm okay either way.
The, the blocks that weren't really a part of the consideration in terms of whether or not we needed to patch the roof. That was never discussed as an issue at any point that I'm aware of. The second part of that is, is that the whole issue about the building and what type of restoration it's going to need is not contemplated as part of the roofing project. So that may be something that the board might want to, you know, take a closer look at in the next six months and say, you know, is the building working the way we want it to work? Are there structural improvements that we're going to need to make to bring it up to a certain standard that it's usable to the, the level that we want to use it at? So, you know, the roof, that, I think we're talking about two different things here. One is the roof, which we all agree needs to be replaced because it is leaking. And it's leaking on the existing insulation. And we want to solve that problem. The second issue is whether we want to, once again, like the senior center, take a closer look at the building itself and whether it, it's time to maybe figure out some kind of a capital plan to, to do the kind of changes and the improvements over there that we need to do.
I, I agree with that. It, it's, you know, the only thing, the, the building itself, when I actually looked at it, I was shocked. So that's why I came out and said, is this something that we're just going to stop the leak at this point? Or we're looking down the line, you know, and do all the insulation and stuff like that? I've, you know,
Well, that was the reason why we included the insulation is that granted, you know, the, the, they are getting heat into, into those bays. It's not technically the way it should be, but at some point down the road, you may be heating those bays. And at that point, you want to have to spend the money when it might be more expensive, you know, five or 10 years down the road when we were doing the project. Why don't we do it, do it right and do it once and, and put the insulation in?
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. Don't, you know, don't get me wrong. I do agree with that. But maybe this is something that we want to look at the building itself because if you go all out and do all that on the roof and you find out that that building is really in bad shape, that cost to me is, is, you, you're putting a Cadillac on, on something where a Volkswagen would have done the exact same thing. You know.
Jeff, you taught me about being able to do just the roof for a lot less than what was planned. And you, you had a method that you checked with Kim where we wouldn't have to go out to bid. Could you enlighten us on that a little bit?
Just let me clarify one thing. There's absolutely no way, it's over $10,000. You are going to have to go out to bid. Between $10,000 and $50,000. And because it's a 1, 139M project, you're going to have to put it in combat. You're going to have to put it in the central register. You're going to have to post it at town meeting or town hall. There are, and you're going to have to put a newspaper posting it. So the idea that you can go out to bid, that unless you're going to be able to do it for under $10,000, you're not going to be able to just, you know, get one quote and one bid.
What was it that you explained to me, Jeff?
What was explained to me is the town can purchase the material and hire a contractor to do the work. So it's basically paying just labor for the project. I, I shouldn't say just basically paying labor. It's paying a contractor the labor, but the town actually purchases all the material that they need to do the job.
And what, what would that come in at if you did that?
It, it very well possibly could be under the $10,000. Again, don't quote me on that. I would have to really sit down and have that two different contractors to see if the, if those numbers are actually true.
Well, should we do that before we move ahead?
It, it wouldn't hurt. You know, again, it, it's after looking at everything, the condition of the building, the way things were, were splitting apart in better, better terms, you know, that was one thing that, is it better just to just re-roof, fix that leak, that one side, and then go from there? I'm not opposed of doing the five-inch insulation, see how much we can get, both sides, one side. I do see both, both roads at that point. So it, at, at this point, it, you know, it would be the board's decision of how, what route they want to go. I really am not opposed to doing the five-inch insulation. But again, I think there's more things that are popping up that may be an issue.
I have a couple of questions. This building houses equipment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does the maintenance or the maintenance mechanic, sorry, not maintenance mechanic, does he fix things in that building?
Not in that section.
Okay, not in the section with the leak?
No, it's not in, it's not in the, in the bay.
It's not in that bay? Okay.
No.
All right. Is the office where the guys go for lunch and blah, 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 is that in that building?
Not in that section.
Okay.
It's outside of that. It's a room right outside of that.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah, the mechanic, the mechanics and the office and the break room and the bathrooms, they're all in the, the older part of the building. If you have a look at, you can see where the roof actually goes up another four or five feet. That section there is fine. It's the lower section where they house the, like, snowplow machines, the trucks, just so things don't freeze up if they had to go out in the middle of the night. At least they're kind of away from the.
They don't have to be cleaned up. They can start.
Yeah.
Okay, so where the mechanic and the men, that bay or that section, is that heated and insulated?
Yes. It's heated. Yeah.
Heated, not insulated, or heated and insulated?
The, the way the blocks are, they're newer blocks, so there's not the, there's no damage to those blocks. So it does hold the heat much better. I mean, if they crank the heat, it maintains there. The question that we're talking about, what they do is they're putting a couple of pipes just direct it into that, to those bays, just to take the chill off. And once they shut that heat off, you're, you're instantly going to be, the temperatures are going to drop severely. It, it's more or less taking it out of the, the, the wind, the rain and the cold to just take that, that, the ice off the vehicles.
Okay, so to do the roof on just the part that's leaking and then to do, to investigate bringing that building, I guess, not, I don't want to say up to code, but to tighten up that building and make it feasible for the mechanic and the men and to properly install heat and whatever else they need, I wouldn't be opposed to just doing, to doing that side just to stop the leaks right now, give us until the spring, until we have a better, so it'll give us from now until the spring to look at exactly what needs to be done to that building. I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I also think that it, that that roof should be insulated. With whatever, whatever material or whatever roofing shingles or whatever that is, I think that the roof should be insulated because it's not going to hurt us in the long run, right? I mean, it's not like we're going to knock that building down. Maybe we just use it for, you know, to house equipment and maybe we add on and get, you know, a mechanic bay and, and another office for the men that is, is more reasonable than what they're using now. But I think that to make that decision is, right now, is, I, I can't make that decision. I can say fix the leak. That's easy for me, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Well, if you end up, i- if you're going to repair the roof and you do have in the back of your mind that you want to fix up the bays, I, I would strongly recommend get that five-inch insulation on it. It, it's because you don't want to just do the thin coat, put it over, get it done, get it stopped leaking, and then decide you're going to fix it up a little. Now you've got to deal with the roof again. I'm, it, it's a, it's a, I don't know, it, it's like a study to see if that, if the structure is sound to continue.
Right, that's my point, right, Jeff? So if we fix just where it's leaking, it'll give us time. Maybe, maybe those bays where the mechanic and the men hang out, maybe that's not feasible for them. Maybe they need a separate building for that. Maybe the mechanic needs a separate garage to work on equipment. I have no idea. I, I, I don't know. I don't hang out down at the, over there. So I, I have no idea. And I don't know exactly what's involved, but in my head, simplistically, if a leak, if a roof is leaking, you need to fix it. What you're going to do with that long-term, whether you're going to build a new garage, whether you're going to add on to the existing garage, whether you're going to build something alongside it, I, I don't know. That's, that's a bigger, that's a bigger question and a more involved answer. I, I don't know. That's, that's a bigger, that's a bigger question and a more involved answer. Um, I, I don't know.
This is a point of information. We did patch it last year, just to, to, to try to stop the leak, so.
Well, uh, to get back to Jeff, what Lisa just said is, is exactly what we had talked about. Uh, is just to do the roof. And you, you felt that that could be done. Uh, you know, for a lot less. I don't remember the numbers you gave me, Jeff. Uh, can, can you kind of go there again for me?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of taking what Lisa is saying. You can chime in. Um, is if we're gonna do it and keep that building, we, we have to go with the five inch. Um,
On the roof?
If that, yeah, wi- with that five inch of insulation on that. Um, I, I mean, I agree with that. If it's a situation where the building doesn't seem like it's gonna last that much longer, then I don't see a reason why we have to go with the five inch. Just get the roof sealed up, done and let it, you know, do its course. I, again, you know, I'm, at this point, I'm kind of 50/50. Um, what's getting me to the thinner layer is the, the structure of the building. Um, I, you know, with that structure of the building and that thing starts crumbling more over years, it, it's gonna create and it, it's gonna, that cost of that money that we put into the roof with five inch insulation is, is, would be foolish personally. But if that building's gonna last longer, you know, I have no problems. I don't see an issue of going with the five inch insulation.
I, I don't see how we've gone from like rebuilding the building to putting a roof on. I guess the, the leap there is that we're talking now about, you know, looking at an alternative structure of some sort. I guess that the, the whole point was just to get the roof done. And where, you know, that, I thought we were all on the same page with that. Granted, there may be other structural issues that need to be addressed, but those are all things that can be addressed through the capital plan next year. And we identify them, we fix them. I don't think there's, there's any desire at this point to be replacing the highway barn, you know? I, I, I don't see that happening. But if, if that's the plan, then yeah, I would agree with Jeff. But if, if we're, if we're gonna stay in that building and continue to use it, um, then, then let's fix, fix.
Uh, yeah, and if they're, if they're gonna stay in that building, go with the five inch insulation. Um, it's only gonna help down the line. Um, I, but getting back, you know, when I was there with Andy and, and George, we looked at one brick, one block that was almost crumbling. You could probably pull it with your hand, put your hand right through the building. Um,
But that was, was never contemplated. If that had been brought to my attention, we would have, we would have included that as part of the capital plan. So now we're- Now we're-
I don't disagree with that.
And, and that's not to say we can't put money in the capital plan and do that as of July 1st. Fix what we, the other parts of the building that we need to fix. With the knowledge that there's money that's gonna need to be spent on the building. Like I said, the whole thing, this is the first I've heard of it tonight.
No, Jeff.
It's never been mentioned to me, is never an issue. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of taken aback by it. Honestly, that, you know, we're talking about, you know, something that's bigger than the roof, you know? It's, it's-
Well, Jeff-
Right.
I'm totally confused.
Me.
Jeff, I'm confused as to what you were discussing when we discussed doing the roof. You felt that it could be done, but do you remember the amount that you, that you had on the table at that point?
We had one at $15,000, $14 something. And if we had bought the materials, then they could do it for under $10,000. And talk with Kim, that would be allowed. But we would have to buy the materials. We would have to get everything and then they could, we could pay them for that. But if we're putting the five inch insulation on, there's no way that that could happen. So it's kind of thrown out of-
And the other thing, the other thing, we're buying the materials, okay? A lot of the roofing companies, particularly with the rolled membrane roofs, I've said this at the, I said this at the last meeting, that they train their personnel to install those roofs. And the reason they do that is they want to make sure that the manufactured material, the roof, is installed properly so there's an adequate warranty and it reduces their liability. Are we now saying that we're gonna hire a company to purchase? That we're gonna hire a company to lay a roof that they may not be licensed for to install? I g- I g- you know, and I honestly, the minute you get over that $10,000, you're still gonna have to bid it. So, uh, you know, the whole idea, uh, you know, at this point, you guys gotta do what you gotta do. Uh, I, I'm, uh, we've laid this out for you. I've, I've talked about this. I feel like, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm at a, a loss for words at this point, to be perfectly honest with you. You know, we ha- we have a project. It's not a big project. It's relatively small in the, in the greater scope of things. When you look at some of the things that we've done in town in terms of, you know, repairs and construction. And it, it's turned into this, this whole other thing. And, you know, we have, Andy has been working with us. He, he, he wants to get paid for his time to put the, the spec together and to oversee the project. And I want him to be there because I think he, we need somebody, you know, that's gonna be representing our interest. But at this point, it really comes down, if you, if you want to do one side, I'm okay with the one side. If you want to shingle it, instead of do the roll roof, you don't want to put the insulation and you want to put the insulation in. I'm telling you what, what we've discussed up to this point. I'm giving you my recommendation. The board has to sort of sort all of this out and, and, and decide which way you want to roll. You know, that's as blunt as I can be.
Well, the way I'm looking at this now is we've got a building that needs a lot of work. We can put a roof up with the insulation and it'll be a costly project. I'm not sure how much. We're talking about $50,000 or more. Um, and Jeff has a solution that will take care of the leak. And it'll solve the immediate problem for who knows how long. While we work on what we want to do with the building in general, which is in very, very poor shape.
So, our solution is not gonna include the insulation though. Is that correct, Jeff?
Most likely, yes. Um, if they, if we know that we're gonna put something into the building, then I would recommend the five inch insulation. So we could be ahead of the game opposed to just doing something and we're gonna start fixing it up. Then now we've got to deal with the insulation and, and I don't see doing something and then have to take it off and, and do it the other way.
Jeff, are you comfortable with the insulation, the five inch insulation? Are you comfortable with that project?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna make a motion, um, to approve the highway roofing project according to the five inch insulation and according to the recommendation of, um, the building inspector.
Motion granted.
Second. Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's gonna do the spec?
Jeff.
Jeff, are you gonna, you're gonna put it, are you gonna spec it out to bid?
It, it doesn't have to go out to bid. The way that Jeff has-
He even calmed down.
This is like, this is like banging my head against the wall. Honestly, I feel like I'm banging my head against the wall here.
You're not listening, David.
I, I, I'm not listening, George. I know what this involves, you know? It, it's-
Jeff spent a lot of time researching this. He sat down with Kim to see if he could do it the way he's recommending it. Now, I, I think Kim really knows her stuff. And she gave him the information that he could do what he was recommending.
All right. And if you think you can do it, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, George, uh, that would only be if it was without the insulation. Um, and if that building is, is gonna be an issue. But I'm, like I said, I'm 50/50. If we're gonna put anything into that building to keep it, then I would strongly go with the five inch insulation. And David is right. I do feel that having Andy involved and doing the specs uh, would be, would be a big help. Um, a- a- and then go, going from there. If it's something that we're not gonna do the insulation because the building's not gonna be upgraded or, or whatever, then a quick fix, just put it on. And that could be done for under that, that price, you know, under $10,000. But you, you put the insulation on, you can't hit that. You have, you're well over the $10,000.
George, George, that's why-
We should find out if we really do want to do the insulation. Because the, the whole, the whole idea behind doing the insulation, at least that's what I was told, was to keep the building warmer, which makes perfectly good sense. But the problem is, you've got the walls are in terrible shape. I'm not sure about the doors. The doors aren't insulated. You're really not insulating a hell of a lot. Not to mention that the heating that's in that building right now is just some jury-rigged stuff that probably shouldn't even be there. So-
George.
Yes, go ahead.
That, that's why I made my motion to go according to the high, uh, uh, according to the building inspector's recommendation, right? So if he goes back and he says, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at this again. I'm gonna make sure that this is what we want to do, whether we go five inch or, or three inch or two inch. It doesn't matter. I'm gonna go according to his recommendation.
Absolutely, Lisa.
Okay, so I'm gonna, that's, that was my motion to go according to, and if it needs to be specked out and blah, 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 then, then it's, it will be Jeff's recommendation to spec it out to somebody else, right? We have a not to exceed number and we know what, what we want to do, but that's in his, that's his wheelhouse. And I have full faith in Jeff.
That's it. And that's where I'm coming from. I listened to what he had to tell me. And it sounds like he knows what he's talking about. And I want to support that.
So we had a motion to according to the building inspector in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Slockman Matthews?
Yes.
Slockman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Slockman Pacheco.
Yes. We're coming up on the two hour mark. Um, I want to get this done as quickly as I can. Is there anything that can hold off?
Yeah, Chris Mussera.
Yeah, we have Mr. Mussera on the line as well.
That can't hold. Can the, can we go right to him and maybe hold on the other things or?
Yeah, I think so. If we're gonna have, if we're gonna have an extra meeting this week to deal with the town clerk stuff, I think the rest of it can hold, all hold.
Perfect, thank you.
Can we just do the weekly warrants real quick though?
Uh, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants, um, 024 to 027.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes.
Slockman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Slockman Pacheco.
Yes. Okay, turn it over to George.
Um, I guess just, can I do my quick thing for report?
Of course.
Cause we have been continuing to meet on the food bank. I know we are gonna be using a container from over the police department, one of the containers that they're no longer using. Um, that has electricity. We have been in touch with United Way and with, um, Stop and Shop, see if we can get donations. We're looking at, we've been talking to Cape Cod Aggregate also. We're, we're gonna be calling on the, the business community to help us out with this. Uh, we're gonna need some shelving and we're gonna need some drop-off boxes. Uh, probably two, one at a, in each part of town, one in Sonnet and one in, uh, East Free Town. The other thing is, is that there, uh, I have explored using some CARES funding. Uh, and it is an allowable expense. So if we could use some of that money to, to get the electricity hooked up, to get the shelving built and maybe initial feed, uh, of seed for the actual food bank itself, uh, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that that's really important. Um, you know, this, this, um, COVID thing really has devastated a lot of people. Um, and this is definitely something that is worthy of, um, our efforts for sure.
I just want to make sure the board is aware that we're, we're working on this. We've, we've sort of taken this on ourselves. It's Gene Fox, Superintendent, uh, now Greg O'Brien. Uh, Lisa has been part of the discussions, uh, so that we're all on the same page and we're all trying to accomplish the same thing. The other thing is, is that there has been a substantial donation, uh, by United Way of soup uh, that's available through the elementary school. And we just, we put it up on the website today. It was in the superintendent's newsletter this week. And we're also gonna issue it, uh, on, uh, social media. So people will be aware of that. It's, you know, we're, we are living in times where there is food scarcity. Um, and, and the other thing I want to make mention about the food bank that we're talking about is that it's not gonna be an income-based program. Uh, you know, right now, I think that, you know, you have a lot of families out there that are two-income families, one of which, uh, you know, might have gotten laid off or furloughed. And they, they, they're not gonna meet the low-income guidelines that are set up for most food banks. Those are the people we're trying to reach so that they can, you know, they have, they have a choice. They're gonna pay their mortgage and pay their heat and buy Christmas for, for the kids. If we can help them out, you know, with food, you know, over the next three to six months, that's what the goal is. And, uh, what else? Uh, I just sent a letter out to Bristol County about the van stand to see if we can get some, uh, donated labor on that. And I know that Lisa has also been involved in that. So that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Actually, we're gonna have one more meeting for you, so you're not off the hook yet.
Oh, come on.
It's called torture. Uh, all right, so, um, we're gonna go right to George and, um, trash and recycling options, um, beyond 2030, 21, 2021. So George, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, uh, were we supposed to have a guest here tonight?
He's right at the bottom of the screen or at the bottom of my screen.
Oh, uh, oh, I don't see him, but that's okay. He's here. That's what counts.
I'm on, of course.
Oh, there you are. Hi. Uh, well, we, we're, as you know, we, we're going out to bid again in June, I think it is. And, uh, we're trying to fix the issues that we've had. And the way I understand the issue, and correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, but I did talk on a couple of occasions to the drivers on the trucks who, by the way, to me, they look like they're doing a terrific job. They're hustling like crazy. And, uh, but what I understand to be the problem is you have a truck that has the automatic, uh, pickup for the barrels that they can dump into the truck right from the cab of the truck. Is that cor- is that correct?
Uh, yeah, correct. But also you, you gotta keep in mind, it's not what we call a, a true automated system where there's, you know, every unit has a, uh, has a cart or, you know, or, or a barrel. So town, townwide, it is what we still call hand pick or hand collection.
Okay, uh, but what I underst- well, there's two things I'm trying to figure out. Is the truck, but it really doesn't matter, but the truck that you're using has the capability of doing that if the right garbage cans are put out? Is that correct?
It, it, it does, yes. It, it does have a, a tipping mechanism on it, yes.
Okay, so going forward, what I'd like to see is, and what we need to do to, to get there is to have the fully automated system. Uh, and, uh, that we should have the correct trash bins or garbage cans so that your crew can pick up everything automated. So they don't have to get up and, I mean, get out of the truck and move things around. So they don't have to get up and, I mean, get out of the truck and move things around. Uh, and I think if that were to happen, it's my impression that. Your drivers would cover a lot more territory per day. And uh, we wouldn't run into a lot of these issues towards the end of the week.
Yeah, let me, so, so let me, let me touch on the, the automation a little bit. So. Most communities we've seen over the last, say, ten to fifteen years have kind of migrated over to. An automated collection where, where it makes sense. There's a number of reasons why that's beneficial. I mean, first thing, I mean, if you think about a community. Uh, including Free Town, the, the aesthetics of it looks good when you go through your town. Uh, every resident will have, say, one set cart for recycling, one set cart for solid waste. Um, it also controls any, uh, you know, any spillage or trash blowing around the town. Uh, and it also gives the residents, you know, it gives every resident, you know, two different uh, new carts. So. There's definitely some benefits of it. Operationally, to your point, there are some benefits. You do get some efficiencies because you generally can go. Um, a little bit faster. Uh, but one of the big things that we really like to kind of, to emphasize, it is safer. It's just a, it's. The, the, the old days of, of having somebody on the back of a truck or manually collecting trash, they're. Starting to fade away where, where they, where they can be. And when you look at our, our portfolio throughout the country. You know, seventy percent of our communities are automated. Um, and certainly right here in the Commonwealth, most of them are. Um, there, there are some that still aren't, obviously you guys, but we still service stuff manually like we do today. So there's a strong argument to automate where you can. The, the challenge, and I think I touched on this a little bit, um, at the last meeting I attended. There's, um, you know, a couple of things to consider. One is, there's a capital purchase for these carts. So every resident would need, if we were gonna completely automate the systems, every resident would need two carts. So there's roughly, what, just under three thousand units? So you need roughly, say, six thousand carts. They're, you know, they're about fifty dollars apiece, give or take. So, so there is an investment in some of the things we do is we. Um, what we can do is we, a lot of cases, we buy them and amortize them over a longer period of time, over a contract to try to spread them out. Some towns like to buy them outright. Sometimes towns will, will float a bond to buy them. So there's different ways that, that you can kind of get at the, uh. At the kind of financial constraint upfront, but, but long term, i- it will pay off. You just kind of got the, you have, you had the expense upfront. As far as the collection though, um, generally right now, just to kind of re- remind everybody, we do what we call a co-collect system. So that truck that we run is a split body truck. So when we come to your house, or a resident's house. We pick up both trash and recycling at the same time. That truck has a divider in the body. Where recycling goes on one side, trash on the other. If we go to an automated system, uh, we would, probably most likely here, have to go with two trucks. One would have to be for trash, one would have to be recycling. To, to dump carts. On a, on a, on a co-collect truck now, it, it's really, it's a, it's a very, it's a cumbersome process to do that. The capacity might not work out well to do that. So it would probably have to migrate over to two trucks, one for trash, one for recycling. Long and short of it, it can be done and, you know, we certainly do it every day. Um, but those things would have to come in, come into play to, to accomplish it.
Well, I guess one of the questions I would have would be, what happens to the revenue we generate to the sale of the pay as you go trash bags?
Yeah, and that's a great question, David. So the, the balance of that would go away. Because if, if a resident gets a cart, how do you know the bag's in there? So, yeah, pay as you throw programs would start to go away. Um, there are some cases where we have a, what I, I would call a. You know, say a hybrid system, we use a small cart, like a thirty five gallon. Anything over that. Would be in a pay as you throw bag. Now, albeit, you'll still probably lose half your revenue on your bag program from doing that. So you really have to weigh that in. Uh, to do it. Um, so it definitely, definitely a good point, something to, something to consider. You're, you're on mute.
No, has anyone else had anything? Any questions?
Yeah, who buys the carts?
Well, it can be done a bunch of ways. Uh, we, like I said earlier, we can buy them and then, and then amortize the cost over the term of the contract. And, and kind of build it into the monthly fee. Um, the town could buy them. You could do that as well. Um, so it, it, there's really no right way or wrong way on how you, how you purchase the carts. It's just whatever the town's trying to accomplish.
Can we, uh, bill the homeowners for that, Lisa? David?
I wouldn't touch that at the ten foot hole.
No guts, no glory.
No guts, no glory. No, 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 no. Nope. Uh, people don't like to pay for bags right now. Um, I, I would, I would never see. Anybody buying a barrel or a cart.
Uh, yeah, I, and I think, you know.
Do the bags go away? Is, is, is that what I, what I heard you say?
Yeah, if you, if you put a, if you put a automation, you put a cart at the curb, there's really no way to know if a resident is using a bag. So the bag revenue by and large would go away, yes.
Alright, so. Uh, by having the homeowner pay for the, uh. What, what are we calling it? The garbage can?
Yeah, the cart.
The cart.
Yep.
Uh, the benefit would be, they wouldn't have to buy the, the bags, but then we would lose the revenue. How much revenue is there, David?
I would have to talk to him about that. I, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
We're charging, I think, eight to nine bucks for a bag, I believe.
Not per bag, per sleeve of bags.
Oh, alright, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, I mean, that, that would start saving people money that they wouldn't have to buy bags. So they should be happy about that. And uh, then. If it would offset what people would have to spend on the carts. So I mean.
The carts will be amortized into the price of the.
Yeah.
Service.
I mean, I, I mean, to me, you know, the price is one thing, and I think we're gonna have to pay whatever the going rates are. But it's the service that's really a problem. And I think we, we, we need to concentrate on the service. And it'll cost whatever it costs.
So.
Yes.
Thank you. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. We're not extending this contract. We're going out to bid. So when we do our bids that, well, not, not to bid because we don't necessarily have to bid this, right? So, um, when we go out to find proposals, um, everybody's gonna be on the same playing field and will have the, the same opportunity. Um, to do what they have to do to come forward to the board.
Yes.
Or for proposals. I just wanna make sure, cause, um, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I mean. You're gonna need to define, uh, upfront. Whether you're gonna be requiring the vendor to purchase a certain kind of truck that it's automated. Uh, you're gonna have to define who's gonna buy the bins. Are they, are we gonna buy them? They're gonna buy them. These are like the little things that you're gonna need to be ironed out before you can even put out any kind of a, a, a bid package.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not that complicated as far as, you know, the issues that we're addressing. And I mean, to me, uh, I, I think that good service and not having trash and glass all over the street. As I heard today, uh, i- it's worth it. And, you know, when I look at the spreadsheets that, uh, Board of Health sends, sends me periodically of the complaints that we've had. Over the past three years, it's absolutely ridiculous. And this would solve this problem.
It, it may, it, it may, but, but it may. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in, in, into all of that. But I, I just, I do think that we just need to go out to bid or whatever we call that process.
The mechan- the mechanical system, because I do have it here in Oxbridge, uh, is not perfect. It, the, there are things when the arms pick up, sometimes things fly out of the bin. And because the driver is not getting out of the truck, they just drive on. So you then may have to have somebody, you know, the homeowner. Go out and say, well, you know, certain things fell out of the bin as the arm is being lifted up and dumped into the truck. So, and it doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen.
Yeah, well, our complaints are a lot. I mean, you just look at the spreadsheets that, uh. We, I get at least in my email, but uh, to your point, David. Uh, I think we could make a few phone calls to neighboring towns that use this system and see how many complaints they get. Now, uh, I have some relatives that live in Taunton that use that system. I've never heard them complain. The only complaint that I've heard is that Taunton limits how much trash you can put out. You can only put out one cart for.
That's the same here, the same in Oxbridge.
Well, let me, let me, we, we service Taunton as well. So what they do. Yes, yeah, so what they do is kind of what I said earlier. So they do a, a small. Uh, they do, Taunton does a pay as you throw program, but it's a manual collection. Their recycling is a cart. So they do, half of it's manual, the other half's a, a cart. But let me, let me just, let me just touch on that service issue. You know, predominantly, we were, there's, there's. There's, there's no doubt about it. We were getting, uh, quite a few complaints from that, the Island Road area, which used to be serviced on a Friday. We've now switched it over to a Monday, uh, to, to, cause we do run a separate truck in there, cause it's, it's now our. Um, the first week or two that we switched it, we did have some delays, but we've now, the last couple of weeks. We, we've been doing it first thing in the morning, starting at, at seven o'clock and we haven't had any issues. So we did notice some people, I think. They still be getting used to it and haven't put their, their trash out early enough, but uh, but we seem to, to get that. Uh, to get that problem, you know, go away. The, the other thing you, you also have to remember. Um, you know, and everybody's probably tired of hearing it at this point is, you know, COVID has certainly had a pretty significant effect on this industry.
The volume of.
Yeah, we've seen a volume increase in the town of Taun, I'm, I'm sorry, in the, in town of Free Town. Uh, you know, up to as much as fifteen percent for both the trash and recycling. So what we used to collect ten months ago. Uh, overnight has gone up by fifteen percent. You know, we're, you know, we know we're in essential service. Our frontline workers are out there. Uh, going through this, um, uh, and doing the best they can. But overnight, we've had a, a pretty significant volume increase with the town. Um, nor have I come back or our company has come back to, to the town and said, hey, look, uh, we gotta get more money for this. You know, we've, we've been pretty good stewards about controlling our costs, even though we're spending a lot more, uh, to pick up a lot more. So the way the collection looked ten months ago has somewhat of a significant difference than the way it looks today. Just because of the volume increase with the curb. And that's just because everybody's working from home, schools were closed, panic purchasing. It's a whole host of reasons. We have a prediction as we kind of model what we're seeing as we roll through the rest of this year to twenty twenty one. Those volumes are going to remain somewhere at about a ten percent, uh, elevated rate. Uh, and again, because even once, you know, we'll, we'll be optimistic and say COVID goes away. A lot of people aren't gonna be returning to, I would say, normal the way we used to know it. So. You know, you've got to factor in all that, uh, all that in as well. So it's, it's, you know, it's certainly significantly been a challenge. You know, we're not perfect. Have we had some services? Who's, yeah. But, uh, you know, I can honestly sit here on this call and say what we're doing behind the scenes to make sure our trucks are running in town every day. In the face of pandemic, uh, is, 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 has been pretty tremendous. A lot of folks don't realize what we're doing. Uh, behind the scenes to make sure that happens. Um, so, uh, there's, there's been a lot of companies out there that haven't been able to handle that change. So, uh, as much, like I said, it hasn't been perfect. I'm still pretty proud of what we've been able to do.
Well, you know, let me ask you this. This should have been my first question to you. What would you recommend we do? To make the service better?
Um, you, you know, I'm, 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 I'll tell you what, I think since we moved that. Section of town over to Monday, that, that was nine out of ten of all the complaints.
Yeah.
So, it, it was done on a Monday. So the, you know, I can simply ask the question, have you gotten any complaints today? Cause today was the day we do it. We did run it early this morning. As long as people had their material out, we took it. So that's been, you know, as much as you saw all those complaints on that survey, which I saw, the ballots were coming from that area. So.
Yeah, and, and Republic actually, to their credit, uh, made a, 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 a significant change in route. Just to accomplish what it was in terms of that being a problem area. The whole, I, the, the, one of the issues was the size of the truck and not being able to navigate down in that neighborhood.
Correct.
And, uh, they have, you know, rerouted things to, you know, be able to send a truck down there. That will actually be able to pick up trash. Uh, previously, the crashes go down on Fridays and sometimes would be missed. And wouldn't be picked up till Monday or Tuesday. Now it's, it's happening on Mondays. So. You know, I will, I will give Republic credit for doing that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, David. I, you know, the best way I can frame the future service, and this is the way to think about it. You, we could, um, if, you know, if we're still the provider, which we wanna be. We can still collect the way we're doing it. We still can continue doing a co-collect and we, we run that extra truck to get the, the small roads. That co-collect can remain. You don't have to switch over to automation. If you, if you go out for, and get a bid, uh, to David's point, you do have to outline all those specifications. How do you want it to look? You need to include all that. So you, so everybody has a understanding of what you wanna look like. I can tell you right now what mine would look like. You would get a price of what it looks like today. Um, albeit, the volume is different than when we sat down three years ago. Uh, and you could also get a proposal on automation. I can tell you automation is gonna be a significant. Increase in what you're doing today. And that's because of the capital investment of the carts and the likelihood. Of putting two trucks on the road. And by the way, they're two new trucks. We can't use the one we're using to do that. It will accomplish some things. Like I said, it'll accomplish the fact that everybody's gonna get a cart. It's gonna accomplish the, the aesthetics and the town will look better. It's gonna accomplish just loose, you know, people putting out loose trash and so on. It's gonna take care of all that. But albeit, there's gonna be a cost. So that's really, you know, as, as you folks are gonna have to decide when you look at the. Look at the numbers is what's the best way to go. You know, again, you can stay with the system you're doing. It's, it's, you know, the service will improve. Um, I'm, I'm confident because we've moved this, some of this routing over. Um, but if you do go the other way, it's, it is gonna, it, it is gonna come with a cost, particularly in the short term. I think over time, as the amortization of the carts come down, you know, and they become paid for. Then, you know, that'll, that'll go away, but it, that would take, you know, that'll take a few years. However, however we choose. We wanna spread that balance of that cost over, you know, generally we do a five year or sometimes even something a little bit greater. So.
How much do the, uh, uh, automated trucks cost?
About three hundred and eighty-five thousand each one. Yeah, yeah, they're not, they're not cheap.
If I heard you correctly, you're recommending leave things as they are?
And not, that's, I, I, I'm not gonna.
That's a board decision. That's a board decision.
No, I'm asking what he's recommending, Lisa.
I, I would recommend if you want, look at both pricing, but then you guys, that you guys as elected officials will have to decide what's in the best interest of the town. And in terms of the cost.
You could set the bid up so that you could entertain both options. It would be alternate one and alternate two. And then for all the companies that would be submitting a proposal, they would define what those costs are based upon how they perceive. Uh, the, uh, the project.
Yep, correct.
Sounds reasonable, David.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anybody have any more questions?
No. I'm good.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye bye.
Have a good night.
So we'll have another meeting, um, before David leaves. And.
You're proving on that, Lisa.
It's sorry. It's just, we have to do those two things. So we'll do those two things and we, and, uh, the few things that we have on here. Um, that are left over and we should be good to go.
Uh, just before you guys go, I'm actually setting the, I've had the opportunity to do some legwork here. I'm just loading all the licenses and the DocuSign. If you guys could just take care of them as soon as possible. That way we can get them out to the businesses.
Alright, I will ent- entertain a motion to adjourn to another day.
Motion granted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes.
Slockman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Slockman Pacheco.
Yes.
When's our next meeting?
Um.
Uh, to be determined. We have to wait for the opinion from, uh, town council and then we'll set that up.
Uh, which opinion?
Joe Fear.
The town clerk office.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so I'll be in touch.
And Trevor, have you talked to Joe Fear or no?
No, I didn't. I just, I met with Cheryl today and, um, Tim and we went through some stuff, but yeah, so I, I'm interested. I, I kinda wish I had an opportunity to before, make sure they're on the same page.
So when he cut, when he had. So when he got, when he has his opinion, um, since your personnel chair, why don't you meet up, talk to him and then get back to the rest of us, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, everybody, good night.
Thanks, have a good night.
Bye.